Here.
Perfect. All right, we have one public hearing this evening related to the tax increment financing ordinance Rock Creek Tiff District Number Four. I will now officially open the public hearing. Ms. Smith, will you please begin your presentation?
We were going to let Ms. Coffey kick off the presentation, but she's not yet here. And I, let me just double check and make sure I didn't interrupt her. Um, which it doesn't look like I do, but I'm happy to go ahead and give, we'll just flip the order of the presentation. It's not a big deal. Okay, so we're here this evening for the public hearing that is required under Kansas State statutes. Anytime you have a Tiff redevelopment project plan that is submitted. So back several weeks, months ago, we called the public hearing for this June 18th city council meeting. So we will walk through, kind of give an overview of the project. I believe that Ms. Coffey, who represents Millhouse, the developer, her plan, and you have a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, is really to just provide a little bit of a recap of the project. It's been a while since we actually saw sort of physically what the impact or what this project is all about. And then my intent was to kind of talk about, again, recap more on the tax abatement side and then the Tiff redevelopment project plan. So first slide, please. So a little bit of history and timeline. It was back in the summer of 2022 when Millhouse first approached the city with the concept of developing a multifamily project. Oh, there she is. I'll go ahead and keep going and then she can fill in after. With the concept of multifamily development on the north side of Martway between Dearborn and Beverly Streets. Some of you may recall that several years ago, we'd had a proposal for redevelopment of the three parcels on the south side of Martway that had been through a series of neighborhood meetings, public meetings, as we looked at the preliminary development plan. That was intended to be a five-story project, and there was a lot of objection from the neighbors just on the size and scale of that. And ultimately, that project never moved forward. So as we kind of went through our conversations with Millhouse and looking at the financing and the kind of making the numbers work on their project, we asked them if they would consider expanding and taking in those three parcels on the south side of Martway, which would allow them to add some additional units at a smaller scale potentially than what had been proposed previously and had met with objection from the neighborhood. So they kind of started work on preliminary development plans. Then you will recall that we asked them, we kind of hit the pause button back in the summer and fall of 2023 because we, they were asking for a tax abatement, which is a maximum of 10 years. The city had never, we had done Tiff projects and we had done community improvement district projects, but we had not ever done a tax abatement project. And so we wanted to look at, and we actually took that time to revise the city council's tax abatement policy so that it was reflective of many of the things that you have had indicated in other projects and in other conversations that were important to you as we looked at redevelopment of the community and particularly when you had a developer who was requesting incentives. So we came back in January of 2024 to discuss that revised project with the council and then preliminary development plan. And I believe Ms. Coffey will go through more of that plan review side. But ultimately, the council approved a 75% tax abatement for the project in February of 2024. So next slide, please. Just kind of a nice history that development projects always take longer than we think they will. But the factors, and this is going back, this is drawn from a February 2024 presentation. The factors that we considered in recommending and you ultimately supporting the tax abatement. The project was going to be a 75-plus million-dollar capital investment with proximity to the downtown core and other amenities, such as the community center. There was, after a review by our financial advisor, a demonstrated gap in the market return if there was no incentive that was provided. So you, you will recall that on each time we receive a request, we go through a sort of a but-for analysis that what's the likelihood that the developer would build this project without public incentives? This is the first, really the first project that we've seen where you had a developer who was assembling multiple parcels, which were currently vacant or somewhat blighted. The Mission 77 or Mission Flats project at 58th and Knoll assembled several parcels, but those were all acquired from a single property owner. You have several property owners that are involved in this project. As we looked at the tax abatement and the impact of the tax abatement, granting the 10-year tax abatement at 75%, Mission's tax revenues generated from the impacted parcels was actually going to double over the existing revenues that we received over that 10-year abatement period. So even with the tax abatement, we were in a better financial position for those parcels. It also allowed by expanding to pick up the parcels on the south side of Martway for more development. As I mentioned again, that was more sensitive to neighborhood concerns. In fact, when we went through the preliminary development plan process, we really didn't hear any of the same objections from the neighborhood at a three-story building that we heard, had heard previously. The floodplain limitations require any building on the south side of Martway to be built, to be linear, to stay out of that floodplain so that thinking about this project or previous projects or anything that's built along there would have to be kind of pushed up to the street and back off the floodplain and likely, as this project does, have podium parking. As we went through that process, the developer was willing to increase the cash contribution that had been negotiated as a part of the deal from $300,000 to $500,000 to allow for potential expansion and enhancement of park and green space. So part of this project involves the city selling Beverly Park to the developer. At the same time that we approved the tax abatement, well, let me go back. So, and then also as an offset for not including attainable housing as a part of this project. So it was kind of a combination that came together in that fashion. You'll recall that at that same February meeting, we actually specifically designated several city-owned parcels along the Rock Creek Channel between Woodson up to Outlook as parkland, which means that if the city were to do something else with those parcels, we would have to go through a public process to, to do that. But that was really also in connection with the recommendations that were coming out of the Rock Creek Corridor Study that was looking at re-greening and adding amenities over time to that area. And then also, the developer had made a commitment to sustain the sustainable building certification process, achieving one globe under the, excuse me, green globe rating system, and then other additional sustainability considerations that were incorporated into the project. So this slide is just, again, pulling from when the council approved the tax abatement. So under the policy, any project has to meet certain baseline criteria. And if they meet that baseline, they are eligible for a 45% abatement. And then there are a variety of sort of plug-and-play categories, depending on the type of project, that allows them to get to the maximum 75% tax abatement. So the council's policy is written in such a way that except in a really extraordinary circumstance, the maximum tax abatement that would be granted would be 75%. So the capital investment adjustment was based on the value of the project, again, estimated right now at about $77 million. This was a target area. This is an area that we've looked at trying to increase density around that downtown corridor, both on the north and south sides of Johnson Drive. They got, they didn't have any adjustment for incorporating attainable housing, an environmental design adjustment, which relates to the sustainability elements of 2.5% and then a community benefit adjustment of 2.5%. And that, at the time we went through that conversation in February of 2024, was related to infrastructure costs, what were estimated to be a sanitary sewer line relocation and a storm sewer relocation. So that's how we arrived at, those were the categories that were scored and percentages awarded in achieving that 75% tax abatement. And the next slide, this is really just a recap. Again, you saw this in February, but this just shows on the smaller table that those properties are currently generating all eight parcels just under $12,000 annually in property taxes for the city with the estimated increase in valuation and the 25% that the city would still be receiving in taxes. You can see we go from about $12,000 to a little over $23,000. And so over that 10-year period, the city would be estimated to collect $265,820 in property taxes. We would continue to collect the stormwater utility fee, which totals about $18,000 for all of those properties. And that's been an important consideration for the council that as we look at and consider public incentives, while, if you choose to be supportive of what the developer is trying to accomplish, we want to make sure that that doesn't unnecessarily harm us and that there is at least some small incremental benefit to the city as well. So then, after the final development plan was approved later in 2024, then the developer really launched into the construction drawing phase, preparing the documents that would be submitted for, in order for the city to issue building permits on the project. And there were a combination of things that happened still. Again, that timeline was anticipating in the performance agreement that was approved in February of 2024. Commencement of construction was anticipated April 1st of 2025. So towards the end of 2024, there were some other factors that came to light as things were specifically located, particularly a water line that needed to be relocated as a part of the project in addition to the sanitary sewer line and the storm sewer line. So in, next slide, please, sir. So on this, this slide, this is just kind of an indication. This really shows you the storm sewer on this map in the bright pink. So the red sort of squiggly line, the storm sewer currently runs basically down the middle of those parcels. And this project would be, and it's the city's to maintain, and it is in a failing condition. And this project would move that stormwater line out into Beverly, come down, turn the corner at Martway, come across one of the parcels on the south side of Martway and enter into the creek in a different location than it is in its current configuration. So the developer came back to the city expressing concern about the viability of the project with some of these increased costs. And so I think it was in March of this year, we had a conversation about what we might be willing, what, what opportunities and appetite the council would have to look at any additional incentives to aid in helping the project move forward. So a couple of things that we talked about. The project, as it was approved previously, had about 1,500 square feet of retail space at the corner of Dearborn and Martway. The council seemed amenable to converting that 1,500 square feet of retail to two live work units. And we looked at a reduction in the upfront purchase of Beverly Park. So instead of the $500,000 at the commencement of the project, we looked at reducing that to $25,000 at the outset of the project with the balance of that park purchase and attainable housing offset being converted to a bond origination fee and delayed until the tax abatement IRBs were issued, which is later in, in the project. There has always been a provision in the performance agreement that if, if the project did not move forward, that the city would have the right to purchase Beverly Park back for the, for the price that the developer paid for it. And then we had, we were talking about, and we explored a variety of things related to reimbursement for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater infrastructure, ultimately landing what has brought us here this evening. And that is taking those expenses from the increment generated in Rock Creek Tiff District Number Four up to a Tiff cap of 350,000. So next slide, please. So as we've talked about at the committee meeting earlier this month, the city initiated this Tiff project plan. Often we see the Tiff redevelopment project plan brought forward by a developer. The city can initiate a Tiff project plan. And in fact, when the larger Rock Creek Tiff District was created back in 2006, that, and it runs essentially from Roland, Roland Drive to Lamar, that entire district was based on a Tiff project plan that was initiated by the city based on the floodplain and the floodplain revisions that had been made in 2003, 2004 to the floodplain limits by FEMA along the floodplain in the Rock Creek Channel. So what happens is you create this district and it sets the base, whatever year the district is created, it freezes the value of all of the properties within the district, and that's what's called the base value. And so as you look at projects, if the value of properties within that Tiff district increase over time, that's what we refer to as the increment. So it's the increment over the base value that was established. And that increment is then what is eligible to be part of the conversation in reimbursing a developer or for certified and eligible expenses. So this Tiff district has been in place since 2006. And it's the red area that you see here. So it is the properties, as it relates to the Millhouse project, it is just the three parcels on the south side of Martway that are actually within the Tiff redevelopment district. But since 2006, that district has accumulated, has been accumulating increment. And there's about $160,000 of increment that is in, in that. For simplification, I was thinking about this today, and I'm going to call it a piggy bank. So it is in the Tiff District Number Four Piggy Bank. The only way to access that, the dollars in that Tiff Piggy Bank, if you will, is to break that bank open with a Tiff project plan. Otherwise, those dollars just sit and accumulate until a specific project plan comes forward. Currently, that Tiff district in total is generating about $83,000 a year. So you can kind of see with what has been generated since 2006 and what it's generating currently, it's not in and of itself likely going to generate large sums of money. For example, that we had a conversation, I think, at the committee meeting about larger creek improvements and that sort of thing. So the city submitted the redevelopment project plan to allow access, to allow us to break open, if you will, that Tiff Piggy Bank and access the increment for a short period of time. So from what has accumulated so far through June of 2027, so not for a 20-year period, which is often what you see in a Tiff redevelopment project plan, but for a short period of time. And we estimate the $350,000 was generated because that's what we estimate by the time we get to June of 2027, there could be, we're estimating there will be approximately $350,000 in that Piggy Bank. So if the Tiff redevelopment project plan is approved, and that would then also require an amendment to the existing or original performance agreement that the city approved for Millhouse back in February of 2024, that would allow them, us to reimburse. So they have to complete the work, certify the expenses for the infrastructure work, and then be reimbursed. And we cannot, there will be some delay because we anticipate, and I think Ms. Coffey will cover some of these costs in her presentation. We, we can't reimburse the full $350,000 until we collect it. So we will not be advancing money to the developer at any point. It will strictly be a process of reimbursing once costs are certified. So obviously, this provides some immediate benefit to the Millhouse project, but it also improves the water, sanitary sewer and stormwater infrastructure for the surrounding area and within that Tiff District Number Four. So the project has no physical impacts on properties other than the mill, those associated with the Millhouse project. It has no financial implications for any of the properties within the district. And then part of the limitation on time is that we can't layer tax increment financing or Tiff over tax abatement. So at the time that we are ready to issue the industrial revenue bonds for the tax abatement, we have to remove the three parcels that are part of the Millhouse project from the Tiff district. And then the council will have an opportunity at that time to decide whether you terminate the district entirely or leave it in place for the remaining parcels. So as I mentioned, if the council is amenable to these terms and approves a Tiff project plan, then we would be looking at proposed amendments to the performance agreement. That would include updates to the project schedule and timelines. It would include new sections to allow for reimbursement of certified eligible expenses from that Tiff increment within Tiff District Number Four. It addresses the timing of the $500,000 payment, establishes a Tiff cap of $350,000. So typically, in a public hearing process, we would open the public hearing, you hear from staff, you hear from the developer, you have the opportunity to ask questions of either one of us. The public, excuse me, the public has an opportunity to comment or ask questions. And then, and then generally, later on that same meeting agenda, you would take a vote on an ordinance which would adopt the Tiff project plan amendment to the performance agreement. It takes six votes to approve a Tiff project plan. And so as we realized that when we had set the date for the public hearing, we had kind of this moving target of how many council people might be, might be present. So tonight, we will not be asking you to take action specifically on that ordinance. So we will conduct the public hearing, and then Council Vice President Reihardt will continue that public hearing to next Wednesday, June 25th, which will be a special meeting that starts at 6:00. And at that point, we will reopen the public hearing, depending on who and what public might be here online or in person. We may give a longer version of the presentations that you're hearing tonight, or we may give an abbreviated. The video from tonight's meeting will be available. These PowerPoint presentations are all available. But then we will ask you to consider that time is really of the essence, as we've talked about with this project, in order to allow them to make a decision about whether to proceed, particularly with the waterline relocation, which has to occur first. And I think that's anticipated to begin in August. And then they have submitted project plans for their building permits. So I'm happy to answer questions now, or I can invite Devin Coffey with Millhouse up to kind of just walk through some of the more specific aspects of the project. And then we can have an opportunity for the public to make any comment or ask any questions.
Yeah, Debbie.
I have two. Number one, can you define for me what changed in the last two and a half years between affordable and attainment? What is the definition of attainment?
It's, it's really, we've used them interchangeably, and we've transitioned to attainable because there are, attainable is more typically attached to the things that we've requested. For example, at setting aside a certain number of units at 60% of AMI. Oftentimes, when you talk about affordable housing, that income limit may be lower, which you could, but they're really used interchangeably. There's not anything specifically that has changed in how we've discussed it or approached it from, with the guidance from the council.
Secondly, with the stormwater sanitary sewer replacement, do we have any county or state money coming to the city for those replacements? In grants or?
We don't. No. There's not typically, because the work is being done by a private developer, it's not the city doing the work. And we, as Ms. Coffey will share, the amount that we're contributing in this additional 300, up to $350,000 is just sort of a fraction of the stormwater work that is, which is ours to maintain going forward. All of those public infrastructure systems will be replaced. We obviously don't have ongoing responsibility for the water line or the sanitary sewer lines, but the stormwater line is a little over a million dollars total. When they negotiated the tax abatement, they had estimates in about the $750,000 range. So even though they got 2.5% credit as a part of that for, for both the sanitary improvements and the stormwater, the stormwater expenses have increased. But once they complete the initial construction, that will be part of our public stormwater system and will be ours to maintain and/or replace going forward.
What is the parameters of the stormwater piping? How far?
If you can go back to the slide that had, so I think it is whatever number slide that is. I don't have a laser pointer, but, so at the top of the screen, you see that sort of little jog that comes in. You may recall that I think in 2023, maybe early 2024, there was a failure in a parking lot of that office building, excuse me, which we replaced. And so essentially, we would be abandoning this project, with this project, we would abandon the existing stormwater line, which is the red kind of squiggly line. And you can see it runs, really bisects that block in a very strange location. So we would be, the developer would be connecting in with the bright pink line. So coming off of that property, and the storm sewer would actually move under the street on Beverly, come down, turn the corner on Martway, cross Martway, run across the developer's westernmost parcel, and then empty into the creek channel. So that's what that dark pink line is. So it goes from the red line, and you can kind of see it, I don't have the scale on this, but it, that's, it's essentially just moving the location of where it enters the creek and where it's located under a street.
Thank you. Have any other council questions? Otherwise, you might miss Coffey up.
You're up.
Well, thanks for having me here tonight. I feel like we've been doing this for quite a while. We've been dating for like three years now. I'm Devin Coffey. I'm the Director of Development for Millhouse. I lead our central region. And just kind of reintroduced myself since some of you all, I haven't really formally met you. So I lead our central region, which covers Kansas, Missouri, and Oklahoma. My company was founded in 2010 in Indianapolis. We came to Kansas City in 2016. And we've done 11 projects here in Kansas City totaling about 3,000 units. Currently, in my region, we have about $940 million worth of assets in our region. I'm not telling you that to brag. I'm telling you that to share that we have a lot of experience. Just here in Kansas City, I have nearly 300 million worth of projects in pre-development stages as well. So we've got quite a bit, you know, of history here. Next slide, please. As Laura mentioned, this is an assemblage of eight parcels, one being Beverly Park, and then two owned by Mr. Kincaid, kind of in the center of the block there. Security Bank on the corner, Credit World on the opposite corner, and then along the south side, Mr. Arnold's Properties that he owns. Assembling eight parcels is not an easy task. This has been, you know, a tough, a tough. This has been, you know, a tough, a tough project here. Thankfully, the landowners shared our vision for what could be with this project. So Laura did an excellent job recapping the timeline. I don't want to belabor that. She covered a lot of it very well. Just to kind of explain again, like we put the LOIs in place, letters of intent on these, on these properties in 2022. Purchase agreements were in place by October of that year. You can go to the next slide, please. This is our site plan. So we started the design process in 2023, and as you can see here, 4.3 acres is the total site size. The max height is four stories. So the north side of Martway is a four-story building. It has 206 units on that side. The south side is a three-story building with 57 units. So total of 263 units here, $77 million project. Parking, we've, the city would require 331. We're exceeding that by providing 358 spaces. The parking garage itself is about 265 spaces. The rest of that's surface parking. As you can see, the building on the south side of Martway is all surface parked, and then we've got a few street parking spots right in front of the building on the north side of Martway. Our construction schedule currently shows us starting construction in November of 2025 and completing that around December of 2027. I'm not going to go back through all that again. I mean, kind of the message here tonight to you all is risk. What I do is very risky, and we know that. That's why I told you about our experience. This isn't our first rodeo, but I will say, this is one of the biggest train wrecks we have seen as far as just the sequence of events that have been rather unbelievable as we've uncovered everything going on here. You know, starting with our utility plan here, as Laura talked about, the, the storm line running down the west side of the property. You can't see it on this image, but along the east side of the property, there's a little blue line that's kind of out in the street. That wasn't really where they said it was, which is kind of why we're here tonight. Laura mentioned the Storm City upgrades. We had initially budgeted those at 750,000. The guy that gave us that bid will not honor that bid now today as we're in this process of GMP, gross max price, finalizing our contract. He, he's not interested in renewing that bid. So our next up bid is 1.12 million on that, which is a pretty hefty increase, $440,000. The sanitary upgrades have stayed about the same. We have had to jump through some hoops there. We had a letter agreement in place with a neighbor. As you can see, the green line kind of running to the east and then up and then over. We had a letter agreement on behalf of Johnson County Waste Water with the neighbor on the north side of that line. That neighbor, so much time has passed that that neighbor has now decided they want to develop their property. They no longer want that easement in their property because they wouldn't be able to do what they want to do. They want to build a parking garage there. You can't have any sanitary lines running under a structure like that. So we've been in negotiations with the neighbor to the south, the at-home apartments folks. They are right now considering allowing Johnson County Waste Water to put a new easement just to the south of that, kind of where that, that box is there that says talking, or I can't really read it, but anyway. So it would just move down slightly, a little bit. We're in the works trying to get that negotiated. It's not final yet, but they've indicated that they would be agreeable to that. That will involve some premium. On behalf of my company, we'll have to pay extra to compensate them for that easement, basically, in a couple of ways. So anyway, we are making progress. It's not easy. As I said, $77 million projects are very risky. In the past, a couple of people have asked, like, how come we didn't find this stuff out? Like where these water lines and things were ahead of time? And in a project of this size, when you have a $77 million project, I've got partners that are very sophisticated investors. And we are responsible to be, you know, custodians of their money, of their investment. So we spend money as little as possible as we get into the investment and the, the progress of being these projects. So once you're kind of in your due diligence phase, you're spending tens of thousands of dollars at a time. Once we get through planning approvals and when we have our final development plan approved and our plat approved, that's when we start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars at a time. That's the point where we were when we found out that this water line was not located in Dearborn Street where we thought it was, where our survey said it was, where Water One thought it was. When we hired an investigator to go make sure that it was where Water One said it was, they said, oh, no, it's not. It's actually now found to be on private property, which means we couldn't even transact on that property because that property is now encumbered by an illegally located water line, and we have to clear the title before we can even buy the property because our title company will not issue title insurance and our lender will not issue a loan on property that has an illegal water line on it. So we are now in a position where we have to pay upfront. Water One requires us to pay the $565,000 upfront to secure the materials to do the waterline relocation. So that is essentially coming out of our pocket. We cannot use loan proceeds for that because we have to get that line relocated before we can close on the land. So right now, we're planning to close on the land, hopefully around October. Laura said we're aiming to do that work sometime August or September. Just got another kind of spin thrown at us a couple of weeks ago. Water One will not relocate that line until we relocate the sanitary sewer line because the sanitary sewer line is 18 feet deep in the ground, and they cross over each other. Makes sense. They want us to go in and do the lower line first before we come in with a 24-inch superhighway water main. So now we're dipping further into our pockets to get this work done so that we can close. So anyway, I mentioned this was a risky business, right? I think you get my point. So we can go, well, we're there. I don't, again, I don't want to belabor this too much. We really appreciate all the help that you guys have been willing to give us. Laura's been great to work with, she's, I owe her a debt of gratitude. I know this has been extremely stressful and very, very time-consuming on my part and hers. So we are very grateful for everything that you guys have given us. Admittedly, it's not close to what we asked for, but we, we had quite a big amount of money up there. Two million, over $2 million was what we're being hit with, whereas we typically would see something more like in the range of, when you're underwriting a deal like this, a $77 million project, our hard costs on this, which is like kind of the construction type portion of it versus the soft cost, which is more like the consultants and the legal dollars and stuff. $57 million, you usually figure about 1, 1.5% is going to be attributed to off-site utility improvements. Just, you know, you're going to have to do something. We're at 3.8% on this project. It is extraordinary. That was one of our arguments with the TIF. We did want a little more TIF, but we feel like this is an extraordinary situation. We understand you guys want to protect your ordinance and your new. So we respect that. I think just moving forward, again, I don't really want to belabor any of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions. She kind of went through all the incentive pieces. I don't know that I have too much else to add here. I've got some pretty pictures to show you just to kind of give you guys that are newer to the council, a perspective on what we're trying to do here. So this is the south elevation. So if you were standing on Martway, looking at the facade, the front facade of the north building, the big building, this is what you would see, the entrance to the main building, four stories tall. You see a mix of durable materials, you know, lots of windows and balconies. It's a high-quality project. You can look at the next slide, please. Flip to the next slide. This is kind of a side view. I didn't, I didn't put all the elevations up there. They, you know, they look very similar, but this would be what you would see if you were standing on Dearborn or Beverly. You can go ahead and go to the next one. This is just kind of a corner perspective. Laura mentioned that we have, you guys agreed to allow us to change the retail from retail to live work unit. So that would actually be the old retail corner. So it's going to look a little bit different now, but you can see it's, I mean, there's some nice design, and like I said, lots of windows, corner features. You know, this isn't just a big box. Parking garage, we did go to some special extent here at the request of the city to kind of beef up the design. We've got some extra design features on the garage to make it more appealing since it is kind of right there next to at-home apartments and kind of tucked in the neighborhood. We're doing a little bit more than like what Local did on their garage. So it'll look a little bit nicer than that. Next slide. And this is just kind of, this is an older rendering, but it gives you the feel for, this is the corner of Dearborn and Martway, kind of looking west. Just to give you a feel for what the project would feel like from that perspective. And these are just kind of some examples of what the unit materials will look like. You know, again, high-quality stuff, durable. This isn't, you know, this isn't an affordable type project. This is a little bit level up here, so market rate slightly above. Yeah, final slide, just again, another look at kind of where we are here from looking east to west. Little bit, set back a little bit further than that first image was, but just to give you a feel for what you'll see with the two buildings. You can see the building on the south and the bigger building on the north. Gives you an idea of the scale. And that's really all I had. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from Ms. Coffey?
I have.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to go first?
I just wanted, can I ask you what attainable means? What is your definition?
Yeah, so just to kind of expand on what Laura was saying. In my mind, attainable is just kind of a generic umbrella figure. Affordable is a number that you can quantify. It's a number that's specified by HUD. And just recently, they set new rent limits and like what they call an efficiency unit, which is like one of our efficiency units, is 522 square feet. Our efficiency unit will rent for around, right now, it's priced under $1,400. That's, that is right at about 73% of AMI. So its market rate would be considered 100%. So we're slightly under, we're not 60% affordable, which is, 60% is kind of the high mark of affordable. Typically, when you're talking affordable, like Laura said, you're kind of in that range of 40. They set benchmarks. Sometimes it dips down to 30 if you're in like a really impoverished area. But 60% is kind of the normal benchmark for affordability. The 60% rate, dollar figure for an efficiency unit is $1,170. Now, as we get into our one, two and three-bedroom units, we are higher. We range then, we get from 85% up to over 100%. So that's where we're, we're getting into the true market rate of what, what, you know, apartments cost.
Are you still looking at beginning in November?
Today, yes.
Is that a yes?
Today, yes, we are.
What happens if you don't get that agreement from the other people with the easement? I mean, how realistic is it?
If we don't get the agreement, Johnson County Waste Water might, might go the route of condemnation on the owner's land that, where the existing easement is. That would be their next step, and that could delay us, I don't know, four to six months. I've never done a condemnation. Not good for us. I mean, it's not the path we want to see, but.
So is an efficiency something that's just a bedroom kind of, or a kitchen?
Yeah. A smaller efficient floor plan, less luxurious.
Can you tell me the projects that you have that you mentioned X million dollars in value?
Yep.
How many of those projects do you currently have tax abatement or TIF on?
Most multifamily projects that we've done have some sort of a, an incentive associated with them. You know, in Kansas, state, it's, it's similar to what we have offered here. They, I think they cap the abatement period at 10 years. So it's kind of standardized. In Missouri, it's a little bit more random. Like, the city of Kansas City, Missouri has, well, the state of Missouri has all different kinds of like authorities that can issue, like the Port can issue, the Port KC. You know, you can go through the PIA, LRCA. There's, I'm sure there's others that I'm not even thinking of. But like KC ATA has their own start program now. So there's several different paths you can take in, on the Missouri side, whereas on the Kansas side, it's kind of either due to for tax abatement.
Anything further from council? Unless you guys have anything more.
Yep.
I found something I'd like to share just a little bit about the distinction between affordable and attainable and maybe how we're looking at it.
So I think oftentimes when we talk about affordable housing, it, we're often talking about some type of government subsidy that comes into play for a low-income individual, while attainable housing really focuses on housing options for moderate-income individuals who may not qualify for a government subsidy but are still struggling to afford market-rate housing. So again, typically, affordable housing generally refers to housing where occupants spend no more than 30% of their gross income on housing costs, including their utilities. In attainable housing, it's affordable to individuals and families within a specific range. In our case, we have generally looked at 60% of AMI or the area median income, but it may not necessarily involve government subsidies. And so the funding for attainable housing relies on other types of options, like we have negotiated in some of our other projects where you, where a developer may set aside a certain percentage of units that are provided to people who meet those, those attainable housing. So oftentimes, you're looking at, sometimes you'll hear more attainable and workforce housing interchange. So you may be talking about teachers or others who, again, are, don't meet the, the government-established low-income criteria but are still struggling to be able to find housing. They can't afford the housing at a market rate. So I don't know if that helps clarify any of that, but that's kind of how we have looked at it.
All right. I think that concludes council discussion at this point. So we'll move into public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, Rock Creek TIF District number four, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember, your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Right? Any public comment? Anything online? No? All right. I will now continue the public hearing on the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, Rock Creek TIF District number four, to the special city council meeting scheduled for 6:30 PM on Wednesday, June 25th, for further discussion and action. Oh, six, did I say 6 AM? Okay, 6 PM, sorry, guys. 6 PM. All right. We're going to move into special presentations now. We have one special presentation this evening, a proclamation recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. As a proud supporter and advocate for the Communities of All Ages program, we regularly look for ways to treat older adults with respect and dignity, enabling them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our community. Elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation of our seniors is a serious public concern, and it is important to take action to raise awareness in our efforts to prevent abuse of older adults and to engage and empower seniors. I encourage you to join us in honoring and celebrating older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our city. Moving into issuance of notes and bonds, we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of two items tonight. Our council committees met on June 4th, 2025 and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member, a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they would request this at that time. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Council Vice President Rehird, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed. Items for A and for B.
Second.
Great. You have a second and a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Folks, please call the roll. Loudon?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Trumposi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Rehird?
Aye.
Motion case. All right. We're moving into public comments. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on this agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Somebody in the audience? Nobody online? Right. We, um, do not have any items coming forward from the planning commission tonight, therefore we will move into our committee reports. Oh, oh, okay. Councilmember Choji, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee? Apologies.
Yes, thank you, Council Vice President. The Finance and Administration Committee met on June 4th and considered three items. The June 4th committee meeting minutes and property casualty and general liability insurance renewal were approved under the consent agenda this evening. And the tax increment financing ordinance for the Rock Creek TIF district number four was considered earlier in the meeting during the public hearing section and will be considered during the June 25th, 2025 special city council meeting. That's the end of the items on my list. Ms. Smith, is there any additional information you wanted to share about finance administration?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Thank you, Councilmember Choji.
Certainly. That concludes my report, Council Vice President.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carpenter Davis, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Community Development Committee also met on June 4th and considered one item. The meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. We do not have any unfinished business or new business tonight, therefore we will move into our comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on council have something they'd like to share? Yep. Councilmember McCrane?
Just a shout out to the police. As usual, they've done a phenomenal job. I've, they've been on Johnson Drive. They've been on my street. They've been across the neighborhoods, uh, doing a great job and I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. I had an opportunity to call one of the police officers for animal control because I had a dying bird in my yard. And the officer said, well, the animal control officer's at his wedding right now. So I'll have someone else call and someone else called me back and they said, we're in the middle of a standoff right now, but we'll be there shortly to take care of your bird. So I'm thinking to myself, what a phenomenal police department. Only in a small community could you actually have that great of service, but thank you.
That's awesome. Anything else? Yes, please.
I want to give a shout out to Public Works. You guys have done a phenomenal job with the swim meets and making sure that there's parking, you know, no parking. So, because on Woodson, it's just been a problem in the past that nobody could get through and I worry about, you know, public safety in terms of the fire and police being able to get through. So thank you for that. Oh, that's actually. Well, I appreciate both of the departments because it's being handled very well this year. Thank you.
So much love. Anything else? All right. Next we will have our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First will be councilmembers Loudon and Hayden Trumposi for the Sustainability Commission.
I was there. Um, we had a gentleman named Ty Gordman from the Sierra Club come and speak with us. He's the regional campaign manager and wanted to talk about the utility, uh, dosit process. We also had a speaker, uh, named, uh, Ashley Langfield. She is from a sustainability investment group and talked about the, um, uh, energy efficient codes, uh, for 2024. Yeah, and that was it.
All right. Uh, next is Councilmember Kring from the Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission.
Uh, Councilmember Schmidt and I met with the Parks and Recreation Committee and we met in Anderson Park. It's great to get out in your individual parks when you're going through these meetings because you get to see what the community relies on is green space and park activities. Had great opportunity to talk about trees and, and people buying trees and what we're looking at and Rushton also plays a part in some of the, the tree access and they kind of commented to Katie, who is the PTA president at Rushton, is part of this committee. And she always weighs in on where we are on trees and what Rushton is doing to support mission in its parks and recreation efforts. Thanks.
Next we'll hear an update from the count, from Councilmember Choji and myself, uh, on the Mission Magazine editorial board. I was unable to make it, so I don't know if.
And Councilmember Choji asked me to give a brief update. So our editorial board did meet, um, last week and we are, have the second issue. We just have started, uh, seeing the drafts of the stories and the photographs that have been taken for this issue, which is themed around music. I think it's going to be very exciting and looking at just a variety of music and musicians that are coming out of our fantastic community. So we will look forward to getting that issue out later this summer.
Awesome. And finally, uh, Councilmember Carpenter Davis with the Family Adoption Committee.
We have a meeting coming up on June 26th. We will discuss the activities, um, with the Mission Family Adoption.
All right. Uh, moving into the city administrators report, Ms. Smith, do you have any items you would like to share with the council, city council tonight?
Uh, Mr. Carroll might just give a quick update on, uh, the interim financial reports and then Ms. Folks, you have very brief and then just a cup, I have a couple of calendar items to review, please.
Yeah, I can be extremely brief. So no, everything's looking all right, uh, with the year-to-date collections in terms of revenues. They seem to be stabilizing a little bit and expenditure wise, where you would expect to be at through March or May, excuse me. And where we actually have spent, uh, we're ahead of that curve. So spending is, is looking good and we'll have a much more detailed and fun conversation next week for the budget preview.
Thank you.
Good evening. I don't have any new businesses to announce, but I would like to, um, make you all aware that our friends at Lulu's Boutique and Fiorella's are both holding some sidewalk sales for the summer this weekend. So if you're out and about, stop by. And then we hope you join us at the Mission Market tomorrow night from 4:30 to 8. Johnson Drive and Noll, um, will be honoring Juneteenth at the market this week and it should be a great turnout, a little bit hot, but the misting tent will be going and there'll be lots of dinner options. You don't have to heat up your kitchens. Thank you.
All right. Just very briefly, um, I would like to give kudos and a shout out to Ms. Folks for the work that she has put in preparing for market. I've sent an email last week introducing you to most of our new market, uh, attendants and our special coordinator, Leanne Zier. But, um, I hope you will take, have an opportunity at the market, uh, throughout the season to say hello. It's, um, it's fantastic. You would never know that the people who are all pitching in to do it this year have not ever been on the front line before. So thank you, uh, to Robin and to all of our new staff. I think it's going to be, uh, a really, really great season. Uh, Robin and I were talking, uh, earlier today about, we, we provide you with a weekly calendar that kind of looks about two to two and a half months in advance. Um, we'll be getting out to you a special events calendar for the balance of the year. So you can get some of those larger events on your calendars and they don't sneak up on you, um, for the future. And we've talked about it several times this evening, but we will have a special city council meeting. Uh, at, this starts at six o'clock next Wednesday evening here in the council chambers. We will have, uh, the continued public hearing on Rock Creek TIP district number four and consideration of the ordinance that's associated with that. We will have a task order, tis the season of sinkholes. Uh, we looked at a task order for a sinkhole in a very recent meeting and we have another one that needs to come forward that I don't think, uh, we can hold off on until July and then the chief will be looking, uh, and we'll be discussing, uh, potential changes to animal sheltering as a part of our animal control services. And then following that special meeting, we will have a, our first budget work session on the general fund budget. There will not, there will be a packet for the special meeting on Friday. There will not be a packet for the budget work session until early, earlier the next, next week. And I think that's all I have this evening.
Yes, I had something I apologize.
The city council has an opportunity to attend, uh, presentation given by Johnson County on Monday evening to give an update on where they are in mental health activities. And it's for elected officials throughout Johnson County and I encourage everyone to go. It looks like it's going to be a great presentation.
Where and what time?
It's at the Johnson County Museum from 5:30 to 8. And they have a presentation and a reception at the beginning and then they have different presenters that will give updates on where they are, where the county stands in its role on mental health and it's for elected officials.
All right. We do not have a need, um, for an executive session this evening. But before we adjourn tonight, I wanted to share that with the public, that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missioncast.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I conclude. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Council Vice President.